Please rise to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk will read attendance.
Counselor Vido. Assistant Counselor Avellaneda.
President.
Counselor Recupero.
Here.
Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Vega Maldonado. Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Here.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Present.
And Counselor Zabit.
Present.
Nine members present. Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
We will now start off with the memoriam and celebratory resolutions. We have a celebratory resolution introduced by Counselor Recupero regarding May as the Asian American and Pacific Heritage Month. Counselor Recupero, what is the wish?
To adopt presidential.
Objection. Counselor Recupero moves that we adopt under suspension.
I'd like to speak on it.
Uh, first I'll read it. Whereas the month of May is Asian Pacific Heritage Month, a celebration of Asians and Pacific Islanders in the United States, and whereas the month of May was chosen to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese to the U.S. on May 7th, 1843, and whereas on May 10th, 1869, Golden Spike Day, the first transcontinental railway railroad in the United States was completed with significant contributions from Chinese Americans, whereas in 1979, President Jimmy Carter proclaimed the week beginning on May 4th, 1979, as Asian Pacific Heritage Week, providing the opportunity for the people of the United States to recognize the history, concerns, contributions, and achievements of Asian and Pacific Islanders Americans. And in which in 1990, 91 and 1992, Congress designated and President George W. Bush proclaimed the month of May as Asian Pacific Heritage Month. And as 2020, 23 million Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders account for 7% of the nation's population in the United States, and over 2 million API Americans are working on the front lines of this COVID-19 epidemic in healthcare, law enforcement, first responders, transportation, essential businesses, and other service industries. And since March 2020, there has been dramatic increase in reports of hate crimes and incidences against those of Asian descent. And where in April 22nd, 2021, the Senate passed legislation condemning hate crimes directed at Asian Americans amid a sharp increase in discrimination and violence against Asian communities in the United States. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council hereby proclaims May as Asian Pacific Islander American Month and condemns and denounces any and all anti-Asian sentiment in any form. Counselor Recupero.
I would like to thank all the Asian American community, and we all stand with them. And I also like to thank our own secretary, which is of Asian descent, and my granddaughter, which is also of Asian descent. And thank them all, and by them being in our nation, it makes our nation a greater nation. Thank you.
Any other counselors wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. We will now open up the public hearing, public hearing on the capital improvement plan of FY22, FY26. Tonight, the city council will be voting whether or not to adopt the capital improvement project that was presented by the city manager and his staff. And if anyone has any comments on the particulars of this plan budget presented to the city council, you may step up right now and state your name and address and speak only on the budget.
So CIP.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom Ambrosino, city manager. I just want to advocate in favor of this entire capital improvement plan and urge the council to adopt the full order implementing the FY22 aspects of the plan. We went through this plan at some length in subcommittee, so I won't be repetitive other than to say this is a very robust plan, has investment of over $16 million on faulty projects, and it continues the city's commitment to utilize our reserves to benefit the quality of life of our residents, and I urge your support. Thank you.
Any counselors wish to speak? I'm sorry, the budget. Any other members of the public would like to speak on the capital improvement project plan? Seeing none, that portion of the meeting is now closed. We'll now move on to public speaking. At this moment, we invite anyone here who'd like to address the city council on any matter to please come up to the podium and, microphone rather, and state your name, address.
You have to make this for smaller people like me. I need help, please. Okay. Thank you.
Oh, my God, you're smart.
No heels, come on.
Oh, okay. I always think that.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Jasenia Alfaro, Chelsea resident at 12 High Street. In addition to being the resident on the city of Chelsea, I am also a school committee member representing District 8. Today I'm here as the staff member of La Colaborativa in support of the local ordinance that the city councilor Judy Garcia is presenting to you respectfully, city council body. The fair share amendment in the past year was supported by La Colaborativa with the collection of signature from citizens in the, from citizens in the city of Chelsea and its surrounding community. The state had gathered over 150,000 signatures from Massachusetts borders and then passed two constitutional conventions with the support of 134 out of 200 legislators, the larger majority in border that has supported in representing the public polling. Today I'm here on behalf of those citizens who have been gathering, signatures were collected, to respectfully ask you to make history tonight by passing the local fair share amendment ordinance that will be to support many cities, other cities that will be also asked to pass this local ordinance. And I'm also here to ask you for your support with the Summer Youth Employment Program Fund, funds that will be allocated for the families of Chelsea to continue with their financial struggles during this COVID-19. Thank you.
I'm Susan Baxter, 260 Clark Avenue, number 807, here in Chelsea. And I've just got some general comments about COVID and, you know, the struggle seems over. We have come a long, long way. Thank you, thank you all for your leadership. And thank you for hearing us. We really miss normalcy and, but we are grateful for you. Thank you personally for the Chelsea Eats Cart ID 21 CM 111 in the, in the agenda and, but resiliency is needed now, persistence and tenaciousness to not go back. I mean, we can't go back. And then I'm letting Counselor Vido know that whatever she needs, I'm here for her. And most importantly, I just want to give laud and praise to Mimi Graney. She needs to be celebrated for keeping all of our buckets full. And yeah, the fire is almost out, and I just want to thank you guys for standing with us at the Chelsea Pandemic Response Team and, and making this, making, helping us make it all the way through something that, you know, is as bad as the 1918 pandemic back then. So, thank you. I really, I'm really, really grateful and, yeah, have a great night.
Roberto Jimenez Rivera, 40 Eleanor Street and at-large member of the school committee. I'm here today to speak in support of the resolution on the fair share amendments that Counselor Garcia has introduced. Just want to quickly mention first, what is the fair share amendment? So the fair share amendment is a 4% tax on income, yearly income over $1 million. And so then that money would be reinvested into education and transportation. Just want to, a couple of things. So the latest information that we have from the Department of Revenue is 2017, and that year, fewer than five people in Chelsea, possibly even as low as zero, because we don't actually know when it's lower than five, how many people there were, would have actually qualified that year for that tax. And so this is a, it's a, it's a proposal at the State House that would have huge impact benefiting Chelsea with not a whole lot of cost to our city. And so the, the benefits would go to K to 12. First of all, we passed the Student Opportunity Act of the legislature in 2019, and it's already been delayed one year. We're getting some funds this year, but we really have to make sure that the state has the necessary funding to continue funding that bill, that law, sorry, so that we can make sure that our schools are fully funded and so that our kids have the opportunities to succeed. After the kids graduate, we need to fund higher education as well, so that our students have access to quality higher education after graduating. More and more jobs require college degrees, and that has to be an option for our students. And we have to make sure that if a student chooses to go to college after they graduate and they choose to go to any of the public universities or community colleges or universities in Massachusetts, that they have the option to graduate without being saddled with debt. I myself have tens of thousands of dollars in debt, as does the majority, you know, not necessarily the majority, but a huge number of people of my, of my generation. Previous generations did not have to suffer through, you know, this huge of a loan burden, and future generations should not have to suffer either. So we need to make sure that we're investing in our higher ed. And lastly, transportation. Whether it's driving to work or riding public buses and trains, the people of Chelsea need better infrastructure to get to and from work and to go enjoy a weekend and things like that, right? So the next step for this proposal is that it, it has to get passed at the legislature a second time, and then it would go on the ballot for the 2022 election, and then the people can ultimately decide whether this new tax would go forth. But I think it is crucial for Chelsea to make sure that the state has the necessary revenue to invest in the things that are going to ultimately help poor working class, you know, low income people of color as well, right? All these different groups need this type of investment. So I, you know, we're really, through my work at the Boston Teachers Union, we're trying to get different municipalities to support this, to make sure that the state legislature realizes that this is a, something that the communities around Massachusetts want for, so that we can have investment in our, in our communities. So I, I hope that the city council will, will support this. The school committee passed it at our last meeting, and so we would, would love for our counterparts of the city council to join us.
Hi, my name is Maria Texera. I live at 81 Library Street. And first and foremost, I'd like to thank all of you for your leadership and all of the great work that you do in the city of Chelsea. I've been in Chelsea since the early 80s, went through all of the school system, off to college, came back as a homeowner. My own children grew up in Chelsea, Chelsea High School graduates, now college graduates, so Chelsea is very dear to us. I'm here today as a homeowner, hoping to develop an empty lot that I have. It's 83 to 85 Library Street. It's about 6,900 square feet of land. According to the development department, I'm only able to do one unit in this huge lot. So if you're standing in this lot, just to give you an idea, Marlborough Street is behind me. You can see triple deckers, one, two, garage, three, triple deckers. So as a homeowner, seeing all of the development all around me, and I know that if I sold it to a developer, and believe me, they bother me every single day to sell it to them, I know that 12, 20 units will go up there. I am just trying to do a triple decker. That's it. And I would still have lots and lots of land left. And so I come here today asking for the support of the city council members as I am working on my plans right now to soon be heard. I know I have to apply for variances because as I said right now, I just don't qualify to be able to develop it. As a property owner, as a taxpayer, I know a lot of the development that's going up all around me, a lot of them are not paying taxes. And so I am just hoping that there's more support for homeowners like myself, the little people, the little guys that are not able to afford the huge development. We already know Chelsea is very, very congested. I'm just trying to be able to utilize the slot that will make the neighborhood look better because it is a huge lot and just to maintain it. If you've ever gone in that direction, there's a playground across the street from it, there's the, the walkway, the green walkway area not too far from it. It's a, it's a very nice area, and my lot just does not look attractive in the middle of all of that development that's been there. But again, to just be able to do one unit would be a shame. So I just hope that when I come before with my variance, that I can get the support of the city council members. Thank you.
Seeing no one else wants to come in front of the council, that portion of the meeting is now closed. Well, we'll now move on to the approval of the meeting minutes of April 12th. Counselor Enion Lopez moves that we adopt under suspension, accept the meetings on the April 12th meeting. We'll now move on to communications from the city manager. We have a communication from the city manager in regards to dumpster permits, writing that attaches the letter, the list of all permits and permanent dumpsters issued by ISD. There are almost 500 dumpsters located throughout the city. Among other information, the list identifies the location, the contractor responsible for the service on the dumpster. The frequency of the service is not specifically captured in our files. Typically, ISD works with the contractor to ensure that the frequency matches the level of trash generated at the property. ISD monitors compliance with our trash rules at these locations, and if there are violations to excessive trash, ISD will mandate more frequent service. Please note that ISD also issues on a regular basis permits for temporary dumpsters, typically for construction projects. At any given time, ISD has probably, has approximately 20 to 40 of these permits outstanding. Counselor Lopez.
Yes, you have the floor. Yes, I should, I was just wondering how many dumpsters we have in the city and how periodically they are checking and emptying them because I've been getting calls regarding that those stamps wasn't being emptied many times a week, at least two, three times a week. But thank you to the city manager for bringing this up, sending this back to us, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda.
Parking garage. Dear counselors, I am writing in response to the recent city council order requesting that the city consider construction of a parking garage for the downtown. A downtown parking garage has been the subject of a fair amount of discussion during the past few years among the city, the Chelsea Chamber of Commerce and the Chelsea Chamber Foundation, particularly in conjunction with Mass Development's transformative development initiative team that is exclusively focused on our downtown. We have talked specifically about the possibility of engaging in a public-private partnership that would involve use of the city-owned land on Chestnut Street. Such a public-private partnership would likely require some city, some city, which is why I have for the past two years included a public garage item in the five-year CIP with $5 million as a placeholder. That item appears in the capital improvement plan for FY22, FY26, under the FY26 projects. I would caution that we are a long way from making any final determination on a garage. There is a lot more study that needs to happen, both about the necessity of the garage's driving habits change, as well as its financial feasibility. We have not yet made a decision to proceed with such a study. However, we do have funding this spring from Mass Development to do smaller-scale parking supply and demand study for the downtown, looking more specifically at better utilizing the existing supply of parking, including the new lots under the Tobin Bridge. That study will likely be concluded in the summer. Although it is not explicitly aimed at determining the need for a parking garage, the findings from this smaller study may inform the discussion about whether the demand exists for the costly undertaking of a parking garage. I will keep the council informed of the results of this mass development study.
Counselor Recupero asks that we adopt this under suspension. You have the floor, sir.
For a very long time, I've been asking for this parking garage. It doesn't, it's really not a lot of money. It's $5 million. We go through $5 million like nothing. This, our budget is over $100 million, so $5 million ain't going to make a difference on getting this parking garage. And here it says we're going to do another study, and it's on the project, it'll be maybe 2026. That's a long time. Why can't we try to make it faster? Why do we have to wait so long to have a garage which the city needs? It will be funded many ways, even through the people paying to park in the garage. Our city definitely, it needs a parking garage. It needs it for the business, it needs it for the people that live here, and it's a great thing to have a parking garage. And I believe that it should be done even faster than the 2026, which is a long way away. Maybe there's some ways where we can get it done sooner. I thought it would cost a lot more money than what it is here. It's only $5 million. $5 million is not a lot of money to build a parking garage when our budget is a lot more than that. Thank you.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have a communication from the, from the city manager regarding the appointment to the Board of Health pursuant, pursuant to Section 42 of the Charter of the City of Chelsea. I'm writing to recommend for appointment to the Board of Health, Mr. Joshua Merson, 4 Ferry Street, Chelsea, Massachusetts, to serve on the remainder of the term by Emmanuel Telles, who has resigned. This term expires on December 20th, 2023. Counselor Brown. Move to a second reading. The communications moved to a second reading. We need two readings for a appointment to the board. Next communication.
IT overtime and translation costs. Dear counselors, I am writing in response to the recent city council order requesting an update on expenditures for our respectively IT overtime to support city council meetings and translation costs. With respect to IT overtime, we only commenced making such payments in January of 2021 based upon a negotiated change to the steelworkers' collective bargaining agreement. Prior to that change, IT employees were entitled only to comp time, not overtime for supporting these meetings. Since the overtime rule took effect, the city has expanded through the end of March a total of $6,303.44 in IT overtime for the support of council meetings. The rate is $54.34 per hour. With respect to translation services, the cost of that service is set by the city's contract with the third-party vendor Cross Cultural Communication Systems, Inc. The current cost is $60 per hour. The cost I paid through a line item in our FY21 cable television, public educational, and governmental access special revenue funds budget. Through April 5th, 2021, the city has incurred a total of $1,809.80 on translation services this fiscal year, of which $260 has been for city council meetings.
What is the wish of the council? Counselor Robinson.
Communication on the suspension. I'll be brief, actually. I was the one who asked for this information. I kind of want to see what kind of dollars that we were spending to be able to cover the city council meetings and also to provide a service to the people in the community.
We have the next communication from the city manager in regards to the, no, no, sorry, notice of waiver intent. Pursuant to Administrative Code 1, period 12, period 02, I'm writing to notify you of my intention to hire Ms. Candace Perez as the first Director of Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Ms. Perez is relocating to Massachusetts from New York. She has secured a residential address at 500 Ocean Ave, Revere. According to, accordingly, I intend to grant Ms. Perez a waiver from the residency requirements set forth in the Administrative Code. Ms. Perez's start date is expected to be on July 1, 2021. A copy of Ms. Perez's resume is attached, and according to Section 1, period 212-02, I request that you provide me any comments on the proposed waiver within seven days. Counselor Robinson.
Accept and file the communication on the suspension, and for the record, I did say I was disappointed in the fact that this person was relocating to Massachusetts and chose not to move into the city of Chelsea. I have great concerns about that. Thank you.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes, I also, I'm against this waiver. If this person is going to take this job, she should live in the city. How are you going to see what's going on in the city if you don't live in the city? You're going to go and live in a nice, beautiful place at Revia Beach when nothing's happened? When you need to be here in the city? So I'm really disappointed also about not living in the city. Thank you.
Counselor Recupero.
It's a great choice that we made. She seems to be very well-qualified. The only, I'm like my fellow counselor, she should have lived in our city. That's the only thing that I'm disappointed in. She should have lived in our city to really understand what our city's like. Thank you.
The next communication.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you. I agree with my other colleagues. You know, her resume is very impressive. She seems like she really was excited. I guess she was excited by getting through the process of all the interviews. And there's two things here. One is, you know, she has a date that she's coming into, into start July 1st. I'm not sure when she's moving into 500 Ocean Ave in Revere, but it's so close to Chelsea that we have, you know, similar developments here in Chelsea that I'm sure that, you know, in the next two or three months that she can find a vacancy to accommodate her for this place. And it's one of the things that, you know, really go through the interviews and talk about your passion and your desire to do a job and your qualification state and show you that you can do those jobs that you speak of. But I just can't understand the committee selection on, okay, will you live in Chelsea? And her response and how did she eventually comes to Chelsea? It is very disheartening because as we know, most of the folks we spoke about, even this creating this position, one of the most dire hard decisions that they wanted to see, an expectation of the person to be a part of our community, to find out exactly what's going on in Chelsea, to see, to get to know not only the restaurants, but the community, the day-to-day activities, to come to City Hall and then just drive a mile away. I just can't believe she could not find a place here in Chelsea. And what does that say about her? We had four counselors speak, and we all spoke about the same matter, about her not living in Chelsea. I don't know how long the contract is. If it's three, five years, it's not like she had to buy a house in Chelsea. Maybe she would have realized that, hey, I really love this community, or I don't, I'm out in two years or out after the contract. But again, not to make a commitment to stay in But again, not to make a commitment to stay in Chelsea, what does that say to us? I mean, you wanna, you know, indicate what's wrong with Chelsea, but you obviously don't wanna be here to find out, you know, day-to-day what's going on in Chelsea. Thank you, Ms. Perez.
Any other comments? Any objection for me to speak from the floor, from the chair?
No.
Seeing none. I share my concerns that my colleagues brought here tonight. I agree with them wholeheartedly, in particular because this is not a job that, let's say, and again, I'm not putting the commissioner in place or in a spot here, but it's not like this is a, a job about engineering and about the streets, water and sewer lines, or this is not a job about structures, this is not a job about body, I mean, sorry, building maintenance, if you were in charge of the schools' maintenance. This is a completely different type of job where it talks about trying to understand this community and the diversity. And I don't comprehend how that is done without actual spending enough time, and I mean, yes, even the off-hours. From personal experience, I've lived here all my life, and I, there are times when I, one of the things I like to do is I like to walk a lot for exercise. And I can't tell you how much more I learned from just doing that and the, the odd conversation that I have with who I may meet, you know, during that walk, neighbors or what I see. It's the interaction that I have with store owners and because I have, I patronize the local restaurants and the local convenience stores. That interaction is key to me, always finding out something new that I really didn't know. And I've lived here all my life. So again, if that happens to me, what does that say about a person who's trying to come in here to talk to us about how we're going to improve the diversity of this neighborhood, of this city, I'm sorry, the employment and the, and the inclusion of this community? It doesn't make sense to me. It really doesn't. You need to live, breathe Chelsea for the next two years to really make a difference here. This isn't about taking some template that worked in some other place and thinking that that template is gonna happen to work here. It doesn't work that way. So I think the city manager's heard enough from us. I hope that this makes some sort of impact. I don't know, again, if it's a one-year contract, whatever they have with the leasing agreement, but I fully expect to make a change and see a change in this because it quite honestly is imperative for this particular position. And it's sad to know that that wasn't really something harder on this, particularly because, again, you know, I understand the, the location. There are, there are definitely comparable apartments in this community that are rentals that could've easily satisfied this individual's needs and requirements, absolutely. So, anyway, moving on.
The next communication from the city manager?
Counsel, sorry, Counsel Brown?
So where are we with this here? Is this done? I mean, we said what we had to say to the chair. Do we get a chance to vote for it, or what's the position?
Well, we could, but, well, we, well, actually, if, the only option that we have is just to accept and file, accept the communication. Now, we've all spoken against it. We all spoke of displeasure with the notice. As a message, one of the things we could do, as a message, is, if you wanted to, is not accept it under suspension and have a vote and symbolically just reject the communication, not that it changes anything. But you could just reject the communication. But it does not change because we have no power over the city manager, and this is part of his purview.
It's day-to-day operation, is that what? Okay.
That's correct.
All right. Just, is it possible that we can explain that to you through the chair? That we can explain that to the public? Because, you know, again, you hear five or six city counselors talk about, you know, disapproving something. But again, we, you know, what we're allowed to do, so we can be clear. I just wanna be open with the public, but there are people watching, and there are folks here may not understand that position.
And, and I appreciate the, the suggesting by Counsel Brown, which is this: To those who are in the public, we have received a communication from the city manager that he intends to provide a waiver of the residency requirement set forth in, in the Administrative Code. He has that ability to give a waiver of residency to a city employee. He has decided to do that with Ms. Candace Perez, the new Director of Office of Diversity and Equity and Inclusion. He is simply notifying the city council of his decision to do that. The city council in no way, shape, or form has any power to reject that move by the city manager, is simply providing of a notice in accordance to both the Charter and the Administrative Code section that he must provide notice of said residency waivers. But in no shape or form does the city council have any ability to reject that issuance of waiver. It can simply just provide a notice of displeasure of said waiver disclosure. Thank you. Next communication?
Notice of waiver intent. Dear counselors, pursuant to the Administrative Code, Section one, twelve point oh-two, I am writing to notify you of my intention to promote Ms. Kate Fox Lent, thirteen Winter Street, number one Arlington, to the position of DPW Business and Grants Manager, and to grant her a waiver for, from the residency requirement set forth in the Administrative Code, Part Four, Section one, twelve point oh-one. In the opinion of Public Works Commissioner Fidel Martez, Ms. Fox Lent was the most qualified candidate for the position. A copy of her resume is attached. In accordance with Section one, twelve point oh-two, I requested you provide me with any comments on the proposed waiver within seven days.
Counsel Robinson?
Accept and file a communication under suspension, and it's beyond me why we would even have this before us, being that she's been an employee here within the city for quite a while now. I don't think it was necessary to request a waiver, being that we've already given her a waiver at a previous employment. So just accept and file a communication under suspension.
Seeing another objection that, that, that communication was accepted and filed. We have a next communication regarding the revised capital improvement plan, FY twenty-two. In advance of the subcommittee meeting and the public hearing in the CIP for fiscal years twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-six, I'm writing with two provisions to the CIP for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, based upon more recent information. The most significant change pertains to Central Ave and Willow Street water, sewer, and roadway work to be completed in connection with the Innis Apartments redevelopment project. As you may recall, the city received a five-million-dollar Massworks grant for this redevelopment, one million of which is dedicated to water, sewer, drainage, infrastructure work. We recently received from our engineers the cost estimate of seventy-five percent design. That design added a new thirty-inch storm drain to help alleviate the flooding in the Willow Street area after significant storm events. This increase in total infrastructure cost to over five million dollars. A copy of DBW Memorial Room and the revised budget is attached. To meet these costs, the city would need to borrow an additional seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to the debt service, of which will be paid from the Sewer Enterprise Fund. The second change is relatively minor. The original borrowing plan included fifty thousand dollars in free cash for the IT Department to stop working on replacement for, of the Cisco firewall. However, earlier this month, the city received a ninety-thousand-dollar grant from Urban Area Security Initiative to complete the full project. Accordingly, we have eliminated the free cash request. A revised FY twenty CIP plan is also attached. I respectfully ask for your approval. Following the discussion of the subcommittee meeting on April twenty-six, the city will prepare a comprehensive borrowing order for the city's consideration.
Accept and file a communication under suspension. Will be something coming up on the new business?
We have another communication attached. You will find the capital improvement program loan order for implementation of the proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. The order reflects revised CIP submitted last week. Copy of the final twenty-twenty-two CIP is also attached. I respectfully request your approval of the loan order following the public hearing on Monday, May third. Counsel Robinson?
Accept and file a communication under suspension. If there are no objections?
The next communication is grant from Med Project LLC. Dear counselors, recently, the Chelsea Police Department Security Grant from an entity in Washington called Med Project LLC. The grant will allow the public, will allow for the police department to set up a program for the collection of disposal of unwanted household medications. A copy of the award letter is attached. In accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, fifty-three A, I am requesting the city council formally approve the acceptance of this grant of one thousand three hundred dollars from Med Project LLC. A draft of the proposed order is attached.
Accept and file a communication under suspension. Will be something coming up on the new business?
So moved. We have a communication received from the city manager regarding free cash request. Dear counselors, I'm writing to request that the city council consider an alternative approach to ensuring that our parks and playgrounds in the city are well-maintained during the upcoming season, as the weather improvements, vaccinations increase, and our COVID cases decline. I anticipate greater than normal usage for these outdoor spaces, particularly in light of limited options we have had to enjoy this past year. I recognize that the city's previous proposal for maintaining these spaces with a large cadre of temporary workers raised concerns as part of the council, although some expressed hesitancy with the cost, seeing far less, more concerned about logistic details, potentially long-term financial verifications of hiring employees, albeit temporary ones. They'll turn on proposing to avoid any employee hiring, instead to go off a bid for a private company, company to, to provide comprehensive landscaping and park maintenance services. This would unlikely involve some substantial start of the season, period of parks for activity, then weekly maintenance work, and then a close of the season and winter preparation. I'm hoping to get some competitive prices with the opportunity for landscaping companies to join the bidding. Although it's hard to gauge precise cost of apps and any recent history in the work, I expect that the price is somewhere in the vicinity of two-hundred thousand dollars. Although there is no means, again, expensive, it is less than we proposed for the temporary work crew, and certainly affordable given our remaining cash. Based upon that above, I respectfully ask for your approval of this appropriation to allow us to proceed with bidding for this park maintenance work. I have attached a draft order for your consideration. If this proposal is accepted and provides beneficial this park season, the city will likely include a line item for the contract work in subsequent DBW Buildings and Crowns operating budgets. Counsel Robinson?
Accept and file a communication under suspension. Will be something coming up on the new business, but I'd ask if the commissioner could share an RFP with this council, so we can see what we're gonna be getting for this two-hundred-thousand.
So are you moving this to conference? Well, absolutely. He just has to move, move it to a second reading, but when it comes up. The communication, so you're moving this to conference also?
Something's coming up on the new business.
Okay.
I mean, anybody can move at the conference if they wanna go to conference.
When the new business comes up?
Can I just ask, when are we expecting a presentation of the, from the director? Because she spoke of that.
Well, I asked if he could share what, what's in the RFP, so we can't, we can't help.
So through the chair, that, the question rises at the, the presentation, possibly a presentation by the, the DBW Commissioner. So we have an order that will come up in relation to this communication. That will be sent to a second reading and also a conference, at which time we will talk about the discommunication and the two-hundred-thousand-dollar order.
Correct.
We have a, we have a cover letter from the city manager with regards to the entry of the budget probably before us.
I'd actually like to refer to the Subcommittee on Conference, if there are no objections. And everybody has a copy of the annual budget book?
Yes.
Communication is sent to conference. It'll accompany the budget presented to the city council. Next communication?
A gift for Chelsea Eat Food debit card program. Dear counselors, today, the city received in the mail from a Cambridge resident a check in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars as a gift for support of the Chelsea Eat Food debit card program. A copy of the accompanying note is attached. In accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, fifty-three A, I am requesting that the city council formally approve the acceptance of this gift. A draft order is also attached.
Counsel Robinson?
There will be something coming up on the new business?
We now have a communication received from City, Chelsea Housing Authority Executive Director Al Ewing regarding Innis Apartments Urban Center Tax Incremental Financing. Dear counselors, on behalf of the Chelsea Housing Authority, I'm writing to you to request to amend the previously granted authorization to enter into a fifteen-year urban center housing tax increment finance agreement with Joffrey Cochrane Company, Joseph, sorry, in support of the Innis Apartments redevelopment project. As you know, the Chelsea Housing Authority, in partnership with the Joseph Cochrane Company, has proposed a redevelopment of the Innis Apartments. Upon completion, this project will yield ninety-six units of new modernized public housing, forty units of workforce housing, and a hundred and ninety-four units of market-rate housing. Located in the ground floor, retail space will comprise amenities integral to residence quality of life. Previously, the city council graciously approved the adoption of the urban tax increment finance plan. Since the adoption, the partnership has worked diligently, diligently with the city to propel forward this important project. However, due to unforeseen incredible cost increases in construction materials, the project, the projection of labor rates and shifts due to COVID-nineteen in the local rental market, the thresholds for underwriting investment terms have changed, and we must seek additional flexibility to close the gap in, in capital to finalize the project financing deal. We ask today that the city council consider an amendment to the original TIF agreement according to the following breakdown: one-hundred percent tax relief for years one, two, ninety for, ninety-five percent year three, ninety percent year four, eighty-five percent year five, eighty percent year six, seventy-five percent year seven, seventy percent year eight, sixty percent year nine, sixty percent year ten, fifty-five percent year eleven, fifty percent years twelve to fifteen. Under the structure, the estimated net tax relief of the fifteen period, fifteen-year period would be approximately seven-point-four million compared to the original six-point-five million provided under the original agreement. Even with this TIF, the city will still earn up to three-point-seven million over the thirty, fifteen-year life of this TIF on the parcel that currently generates no tax dollars to the city. A table illustrating the proposed amendment is attached for consideration. Sincerely, Al Ewing.
Under suspension, if there are no objections?
Seeing none, this is moving to conference. We have no committee reports. We're now moving on to unfinished business. Counselor Taylor?
I'd like to remove my ordinance from Subcommittee on Conference and adopt on a roll-call vote.
Counsel Taylor is asking that we, we, we move from Subcommittee on Conference the noise ordinance, control units, sorry, noise control ordinance regarding fireworks. What is the motion?
Roll call. I think you said.
Yeah, remove from conference and adopt on a roll-call vote.
Here's a motion to adopt this on a roll-call vote. Are there any discussion? Counsel Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. President. This, this ordinance change is a response to the unreasonable use of fireworks last year that lasted for months, you know, months before the Fourth of July holiday and, and at least a month afterwards with fireworks going off all over the city, two, three, four o'clock in the morning sometimes. More than any other issue since I've been a city counselor, there has, I, I've never gotten as much feedback from the public as, as on this issue. And people were legitimately traumatized. We had veterans who have PTSD that were being absolutely traumatized, newborn babies, pets, you know, hardworking folks that are just trying to get a good night's sleep and, you know, being woken out of bed by the sound of huge fireworks going off, much less the, the trash that's left all around the city. And it's a disgrace. I wish we could do more to address this issue, but we're being constrained by state law in the amount of fines that we can levy on this. But I do plan on speaking with the two state reps from Chelsea about maybe changing something up on Beacon Hill. So I would ask my colleagues respectfully to please vote in favor of this. There is ample support for this out in the public. In fact, I would say overwhelming support. So thank you.
Counselor Brown?
Mr. President, I'll be voting in favor of this here. I want to thank the counselor and also the residents that have been pounding us to make sure we get some changes here. This legislation that we're passing today is putting the residents, those that's out there violating this zoning ordinance here, it puts you on notice. We're actually now, we have talked to our legal department, we have the teeth, we have the bite here. If you're out there, you continue to disregard the lives of those that live around you by continuing to burst those firecrackers into the air at all times of night to scare children, scare residents, scare animals. We had to come to this to be able to make sure our residents are safe and they feel secure in their community and also from the harm that comes from these firecrackers extensively throughout the night. So we're giving you fair warning. The police will be out there, we will be ticketing, we will be coming after you. And if you get a ticket and you believe that you're not going to pay for it, if you're a resident in Chelsea and you have to pay a bill or you have to get something here in Chelsea, you will not be granted that until you have paid the fine for what you have committed this act. So we're so, I'm sorry that we have to come down, it's hard, but it's a necessary that we do because we've given you all the opportunity to have and show respect for our community. And it's just been really bad on some folks. I mean, I know around the Fourth of July, a lot of folks, they go out and they celebrate, but not every night. Through this past year, there was numbers of weeks and weekends and then it was a mouse and cat game. It seems though, when the police was trying to put out the fire, you were moving to other areas in the city and show them that you can just continue to get away with it. But we're hoping this order will give us some support from our legal department and our police department to catch you and also penalize you. So thank you again, counsel, and I hope everyone supports this. Thank you.
Counselor Recupero?
I'm in favor of this too. The only part that I don't understand is, and I would like the city solicitor to explain it to me, over here it says, general provisions, section 1A, general penalty, criminal and noncriminal disposition. Is this going to be a criminal offense? Or is it just going to be, that's what I don't understand. What does it mean, criminal or noncriminal disposition? What is that? So that means a little kid said a firework, he gets a criminal record for setting off a firework? I can understand him getting 300, you know, the fine, but I'm not, I don't understand what that means. Maybe the city solicitor can explain to me exactly what it means.
So through the chair, can the city solicitor explain this, if this is a civil or a criminal offense?
Well, the city, the city of Chelsea has no authority to issue criminal offenses or arrest anybody under criminal, under the city ordinances. This is a noncriminal fine that we issue.
All right, okay, I agree with that. It's not criminal law, it's okay.
Counselor Robinson?
I'll be brief, actually. In the conference, I talked about the importance of education, and I think we need to educate our community in regards to the fireworks. And I think we need to be looking at a campaign that we can start early enough notifying our residents in our community about the fire, about the fireworks. And actually, I would call on the police and fire departments to do a public service announcement along with some of my colleagues that might want to be able to a public service announcement, letting people know that we will not tolerate what happened here last summer in regards to the fireworks. And my colleague made a good point in regards to the veterans who are at the soldiers' home who had a lot of difficulty when the fireworks were, were going off in regard to some of them who were affected by PST. So it's important that we jump out there and start talking about educating people around the fireworks and that we will not tolerate this taking place this summer. So thank you.
Counselor Garcia?
Chairman, I also want to take a moment to applaud Counselor Taylor for really spearheading this very early on. It's, it's incredible, and many of my colleagues have pointed out really good points, and, and I'd like to briefly say, the timing is perfect. Memorial Day weekend is just around the corner, Fourth of July is just around the corner. And, and yes, I clearly agree with the counselor who, who just mentioned education is, is a key component, but also putting our foot down and, and really making it clear to many residents that this behavior will not be tolerated. So thank you, Counselor Todd Taylor, for putting this forward, and I look forward to the.
Any other councilors? Seeing none, we'll now move to roll call. Oh, I just want to read one thing just for the public. So the amendment with voters tonight is to amend Chapter 16, miscellaneous offenses and provisions, Article 6, offenses involving public peace in order as follows. Add a new subsection O to 16 dash 99, noise control, as follows. O, fireworks. The use of fireworks subject to Section 39 of Chapter 148 of Massachusetts General Law shall be defined to constitute, constitute rather, an unreasonable noise under this section. Notwithstanding the other provisions of this section, the penalty for the first offense of use of fireworks shall be $300. The enforcers of such fine would be police officers, firefighters, and inspectional services inspectors.
A yes vote would be to adopt, a no vote would be not to adopt. Counselor Damali Vido, absent. Counselor Abadanaeda?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado? Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor Zabit?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent, motion adopted.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda is an order introduced in regards to the acceptance of Eastern Avenue as a city-owned road. Whereas the Massachusetts Highway Commissioner, acting on behalf of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, did under date one, 1901 layout 609 and September 8, 1904 layout 907, to take charge of the state highway road in the city of Chelsea, city county of Suffolk, known as Eastern, Eastern Avenue, as shown in the plans of the state highway on file the Office of Massachusetts Department of Transportation, copies of which plan have been filed in the Office Municipal Council in the city of Chelsea for Suffolk County, in the Office of City Clerk in said city of Chelsea. Said orders and layouts in taking, being recorded by the Registry of Deeds in Boston. Whereas it now appears advisable to discontinue, to discontinue said state highway locations. Now therefore, acting under the provisions of Chapter 6C and Chapter 81, Section 12 of the general laws, and appearing in the official edition thereof, enacts an amendment thereof and addition thereto, the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division adjudicates that public necessity and convenience require that said department should discontinue as state highway all the existing state highway locations laid out as is shown in the aforementioned plans. And all existing drainage rights and the pertinent or to and necessary operation of drainage system of the state highway to be discontinued and hereby transferred to the city. The length of the state highway discontinued is 5,064.31 feet. Stay hereby discontinued as shown plans in the aforementioned title as follows. What is the wish of the council?
I make the motion to move out of Subcommittee on Conference and bring forth under a roll call vote.
Counselor Garcia asks us, we move this out of Subcommittee on Conference? And that we have a roll call vote? Any discussion? Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Chairman. Last week, we had a discussion on this, and there was a lot of uncertainty of what happened back in the 90s, but the facts were that at some point, the city went into an agreement with this here piece of state highway, and it's now time for us to come into the outbargaining of the agreement, which at some point that we would take it back. Obviously, when you take on this responsibility, you obviously pick up some, you're paying some expense, and most of my colleagues and myself, we were a little unsure of why we had to do it at this point of where we are in 2021. The manager did speak to us about it, and there was, you know, again, I'm not sure if any of us were on the city council at the time that the city went into an agreement with the state about this state highway being owned, and then at some point, they would, obviously, there was some, some conditions that they had to make, and there were some conditions that we had to make. And the final condition that we have to make is tonight, to bring this out of the state leadership and bring it back into our leadership. And as about the state, that it's going to be some responsibility of us now maintaining this road and also taking on the responsibility. So I want to thank all the colleagues that was at the meeting. We did get very much informed about it, although we, a bunch of us disagreed with it, but I think this is the best thing, the option that we have is to vote for this to be our property again. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson? None? Okay, ready to vote?
A yes vote would be to approve, a no vote would be to deny. Counselor Vido, absent. Counselor Abadanaeda?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado, absent. Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Zabit?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent, the motion carries.
Moving on to now to second readings. We have an order introduced by Counselor Robinson regarding the cost items set forth in the collective bargaining agreement negotiated with SEIU Local 888 pursuant to Section 4.3 of Chelsea Charter. The city of Chelsea council approves the cost items set forth in collective bargaining agreement negotiated with SEIU 888, memorialized in a memorandum of the agreement July 20, July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, fiscal year dated 2021. Counselor Robinson?
As for a roll call vote on the adoption, if there are no objections?
Seeing none. Clerk will call a roll.
A yes would be to approve, a no would be to deny. Counselor Vido, absent. Counselor Abadanaeda?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia? Counselor, yes. Counselor Vega Maldonado, absent. Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Zabit?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent, motion is adopted. The next order read for the second time pursuant to Section 4.3 of the Chelsea City Charter, Chelsea City Council approved the cost items set forth in the collective bargaining agreement negotiated with the SEIU Local 888, memorialized in a memorandum of agreement for the period July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024, fiscal years 2022 dash 2024, dated April 1, 2021.
Counselor Robinson?
A roll call vote on the adoption, if there are no objections?
Seeing none. The clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Vido, absent. Counselor Abadanaeda?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado, absent. Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Zabit?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent, motion is adopted. The next item I read for the second time introduced by Counselor Robinson ordered that to fund the collective bargaining agreement negotiated with the SEIU Local 888 for fiscal years 2021, the Chelsea City Council authorized the appropriation from free cash of $46,200 to the FY 2021 regular salaries account to fund the FY 2021 contract bonus payments. Such payments to be allocated by apartments in the following manner. Auditing 2,200, purchasing 1,100, assessing 1,100, treasury 5,500, central billing 1,100, city clerk 1,100, housing, community development 1,100, police 5,500, fire 1,100, inspectional services 14,300, parking 1,100, DPW administration 3,300, DPW building and grounds 4,400, HHS administration 2,200, HHS elder services 1,100.
Counselor Robinson?
Hold on the adoption, if there are no objections?
Clerk, call a roll.
Counselor Vido, absent. Counselor Abadanaeda?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Vega Maldonado, absent. Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor Zabit?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent, motion adopted. Next order introduced by Counselor Robinson ordered pursuant to Section 4 dash 31 of Chelsea Charter, Chelsea City Council approved the cost items set forth in the collective bargaining agreement negotiated with the New England Police Benevolent Association, Inc., Local 98, police superior offices memorialized in a memorandum of agreement for the period July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024, dated April 5, 2021.
Counselor Robinson?
And ask for a roll call vote on the, on the adoption, if there are no objections?
Clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Vido, absent. Counselor Abadanaeda?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado, absent. Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor Zabit?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent, and the motion carries. The next order introduced by Counselor Robinson ordered that pursuant to Section 4 dash 31 of the Chelsea City Charter, the Chelsea City Council approved the cost items set forth in the collective bargaining agreement negotiated with the New England Police Benevolent Association, Inc., Local 98, police superior offices memorialized in a memorandum of agreement for the period July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, dated April 5, 2021.
And ask for a roll call vote on the adoption, if there are no objections?
Counselor Robinson asks for a roll call. Seeing no speakers, the clerk call a roll.
Counselor Vido, absent. Counselor Abadanaeda?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado, absent. Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Zabit?
Yes.
And nine in favor and none opposed, two absent, and the motion carries. And that's it on second reading, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we're now moving on to new business. We have a resolution introduced by Counselor Garcia regarding the fair share amendment We have a resolution introduced by Council Garcia regarding the fair share amendment. Whereas the best way to stand to help with and work, I'm sorry, stand with and help working families as well as build a stronger economy that works for everyone is to make sure that we have high-quality public schools for all children, affordable public higher education, and a reliable transportation system. And whereas the fair share amendment is proposed to amend the Massachusetts Constitution to create an additional tax of four percentage points on a portion of a person's annual income above $1 million. And in June 2019, the legislature advanced the fair share amendment with a constitutional convention of 147 in favor and 48 opposed. Whereas the 48, the fair share amendment will provide economic relief to working families as well as build a stronger economy in Massachusetts, provide high-quality education for all children, build an affordable higher education, and reliable transportation system. The fair share amendment acknowledges the need for well-rounded education and a rich and varied curriculum that includes core academic subjects and opportunities to engage with music, art, and athletics, as well as provide resources to help students academically, socially, emotionally due to COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas additional funding is needed to ensure that all schools can maintain and provide small class sizes, offer social emotional supports, and hire additional counselors, nurses, and social workers. Whereas the new state revenue is necessary to build coming roads and bridges, improve our public schools from PK through college, invest in fast and reliable public transportation, make higher public education affordable again, and expand opportunities for healthy walking and bicycling. Whereas Massachusetts needs new investment in our transportation and public education system before COVID-19 pandemic, and those investments are hypercritical to lift our economy in an equitable, long-lasting recovery. Whereas our Commonwealth highest-income residents who have seen their collective networks skyrocket in recent years, for some especially during the pandemic, pay a lower percentage of their income in state and local taxes than do the working-class people of Chelsea, and clearly have the means to support the investments our constituents need. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council, Chelsea City Council, supports the proposed fair share amendment, which would create an additional tax of four percentage points on annual income above $1 million, and dedicate the funds raised by this tax to quality public education, affordable public colleges and universities, and for repair and maintenance of our roads, bridges, and public transportation. Be further resolved, the Chelsea City Council supports the legislature to place the fair share amendment on the 2022 ballot for voters to decide. Councilor Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to accept the resolution under roll call vote, and if I may speak on it?
You may, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I will be brief. I want to give a big shout out to the members of our community, our school committee members. I also see school committee member Rosemary here, who really spearheaded this initiative by bringing it to their school committee and voting unanimously in favor of this. This is a larger narrative, it's a larger legislation that's being pushed at the state level. And as you may have heard during the public speaking portion, which was so eloquently pitched by school committee member Justin Alfaro, but also by school committee member Roberto Jimenez, this is an opportunity for us to be able to identify more funds and ensure that people who are making millions of dollars in income, not in wealth, but in income, pay their fair share, and that we may guarantee residents throughout our state better education, but also better infrastructure. So briefly, I'll really thank, and I also want to shout out many of my colleagues who sponsored this resolution, so, so thank you all so much. And ultimately, this is a symbolic gesture to really show that we support the larger narrative that's happening in our state, that we support better education, that we support better infrastructure, but also that ultimately, we want to allow voters to decide. So, you know, the floor, hopefully, this will make it to the ballot in 2022, and hopefully voters will be able to decide. But this is again a symbolic gesture to, to really show that we support that narrative. So thank you to all my colleagues, and yeah, that's, that's all I have on my end.
Council Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I just want to thank the members of the school committee that came up tonight to support this amendment to be considered here for the city council. I want to thank my colleague for giving me a call, asked me if I wanted to sign on. I said yes. I know this amendment is quite difficult to digest depending on where you are. It's not fair for everyone that's in the state of Massachusetts, but it's fair for the residents and the children of Chelsea and other communities like Chelsea. So I think we sometime have to compromise what we do here, and we have to compromise with the best thought and the best direction for the residents that we represent. So I'll be supporting this amendment. Again, at the end of the day, the voters will again get another bite at this apple to see what they wanted to do statewide with it. But I think it's important for us to look at a place like Chelsea and surround the communities and say, hey, honestly, you got kids in the school system here. We know that they've been undercounted. We know once you're undercounted, that you don't get the fair dollars that you would be getting. It's almost like the census. Once we're undercounted for the census, we won't get the full amount that's really allotted for the number of people that we represent and the number of people that live in our community. This is a piece of legislation that would allowed us to get an additional 4% for those to make a lot of more money than people in Chelsea, but also help out the people in Chelsea. And throughout the Commonwealth, other cities will be doing the same thing. Lowell, Springfield, Boston, Leveer, Everett, New Bedford. If you've been watching the television, if you've been keeping up with this here, a lot of school committee members, elected officials, mayors, and city officials have been standing on this, and they're still wrestling with it. So I think it gives us a great opportunity. I'm proud to support it. Again, for Chelsea, if I was living in Weston, I probably wouldn't be surprised. Weston or Brookline, I probably wouldn't be supporting it. But I'm living in Chelsea, I'm going to support the people that I believe that need it the most here, and I believe it's our kids. Thank you.
Council Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to keep to my policy of voting no on all resolutions having to do with partisan politics. This has no bearing on anything that the Chelsea City Council has the power to do or to enact. Therefore, I'll be voting no as usual. Thank you.
Does anyone have any objection if I speak from the chair? No. I'm actually going to stand up for this one. I want to recognize that this was actually an effort done by Raise Up, which is an organization that has worked, work that I admire. They helped campaign for the higher minimum wage here in Massachusetts, and also for guaranteed sick time for mass workers. You know, nothing is as difficult in politics than arguing tax policy. And this premise of them trying to, you know, increase the investment in public education and public infrastructure and transportation, I support that. However, I just don't support what this particular manner is being presented in front of us. I think it's a little unfair, divisive, participates in the type of politics I never wanted to participate in, which is like class warfare. I never wanted to participate in that. And I think it's a little bit hypocritical, and I'll get to that in a little bit later. But I also think, as an economist, that this would be very damaging to our state. You think it's going to be beneficial to Chelsea, but overall, it won't be, not when you're damaging the state as a whole, as you're talking about society. There are five states already that have done this, and all five states have lost its residents who have felt burdened and have left the state and moved to other states that don't have the same tax burden that is similar to this measure. So do we want to join Connecticut, Maryland, California, and New Jersey on this sort of burdening the Millionaire's Club? And again, the number that was picked here wasn't done, not done scientifically. It just said, you know, we're just going to grab a number in the air and say, yeah, if you're a millionaire, you can just afford it. It just, what does he mean? Well thought out. And if you don't think that people will move, already, an example have already been set, in this world now, the new world that we live in, the new world order of pandemic, where people are working remotely, that don't have to drive into work anymore and so forth, it will happen. We've already seen, we are right now watching Massachusetts and New Hampshire go at it, embroiled in a fight over tax dollars, because formerly, there were employees, people live in Massachusetts that are now working remotely, that used to commute, and because of the pandemic, stayed at home, but their jobs, their location was Massachusetts. And Massachusetts tried to continue to tax those individuals and keep their income. And Mass, and New Hampshire's there saying, whoa, 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 wait a minute. That was before, when there was no transportation going back between the states. But now, they're, they're here, you know? We're moving to this type of world where you will not have to go to another state to work. You can work remotely, and your locate, your job is going to be a cloud. Trust me, that's, that's the world we're coming. So this will speed up. If you don't think that someone's going to say, why am I going to live in a, in a state that's high taxed? It'll happen. Earlier, I said hypocritical, and why do I say that? In 2000, there was a similar ballot on a ballot question that asked the voters of Massachusetts, everybody had the choice to reduce their taxes from 5.85 down to 5%. And 60% of the voters in this state chose to vote, to vote, to pay less taxes. In 2000, 60% said, I don't want to pay more, I want to pay less, from 5.85 down to 5%. It wasn't the millionaires who said, I don't want to pay more. It was everybody who said, I don't want to pay more. And you can imagine the calamity that happened immediately after. Governor James Swift proposed a new budget, and it slashed. Local aid, schools, teachers, firefighters, police, we're all going to get laid off because of this dramatic cut, because again, when given the choice of whether or not I want to pay more in taxes, of course, people are going to say no. And that's what ended up happening. To avoid this calamity, the state legislature said, wait a minute, let's try to do this in little, small segments. And they added 5% per year reduction until just now. Just now, in 2020, January 2020, was the first year we actually reached 5%. So you want to know why our schools were losing money, why local aid dropped, why there's no money for infrastructure as much as there used to be? That's why, because the voters back then said, I don't want to pay more. And yet, this group, there's now a movement to say, oh, I don't want to pay anymore, but I want them to pay more. That makes no sense. That's why I can't get on board with this. Because it doesn't make, you know, if, if we're all in it together, let's come up with a plan altogether. Let this agency or this organization say, put a ballot question that says everyone's going to pay 5.5, increase it another 0.5%, but that would be harder. But it's easier to do when you're saying, oh, I want them to pay. That's why I don't think this is the right way to go. You talk about transportation. Governor Deval Patrick proposed with State Secretary of Transportation at the time, Al Luizy, in 2009, to increase the gas tax from 19 cents to 24 cents. And it was dead on arrival. The legislature didn't want to, because they didn't want to fear the repercussions of the voters of Massachusetts that were going to pay an extra 5 cents in transportation for an extra 5 cents in gas. That gas tax hasn't been touched since 1993. The same 19 cents that we're collecting, the state collects in 1993, is the same gas tax that they're collecting today. We've seen everything talk to us about the types of costs that have gone up. Labor costs have gone up. Construction materials have gone up, whether you're using cement, steel, or asphalt, which is used by our highway division for new roads, whether you want to buy a new train. Everything has gone up in price, but we're still stuck at collecting 19 cents, because it was never adjusted to inflation. And whenever anyone talks and proposes to the state legislature, lets everyone pay a little bit extra, they're afraid, they don't have the political will to face the ire of the general public. But in this example, it seems like they don't mind pissing off a few, pardon the French, of the Millionaire's Club. Well, why? Because they're so small in numbers that they don't have to wait, but you'll end up losing them. You know, again, I admire the intent here. Invest in us public schools. As a matter of fact, we don't even know what's going to happen with the new Biden plan. Biden plan is talking about free community schools, free community college, pre-K, things that this community did before. If that goes into place, if there is free community college, if there is pre-K paid for, doesn't that mean that we won't be spending money? So I understand that the will here, I am not going to be voting in favor of this, but this is what I will do. I am willing to draft another, call it, resolution. One that asks our state legislature to increase the gas tax. One that says, let's increase our personal tax from 5% to 5.5 for everybody. One that says, hey, the people who are riding on 93 don't get a free ride. As a commuter from the North Shore, I don't like it that if you get on the Tobin, you got to pay, but you don't pay, and you, if you drive through the tunnel, you got to pay. If you come in from Route 90, you got to pay a toll. But 93, North and South, doesn't get a pay, doesn't get to pay? Hey, why do they get the free ride? Let them also pay for the infrastructure and the roads that we have here. You put that, I will put that on a, on a, in a resolution, those other ways of it being fair, and I'll support it. But this, this whole thing of just saying, let's just collect from the Millionaire's Club, that'll solve the problems, that'll help us, that's not a way to go. It's divisive, and it's, you know, again, it's just, it's just the easy way to go. It's a scapegoat approach. There are real ways to do it. You have to have the political will and be able to say, I will face the fire of the residents and the voters who are going to be disappointed or pissed off that I increased the price of gas. Oh, well, or I'm going to put tolls on 93 and North and South. Oh, well, Cape Cod is going to be pissed off. Everyone south of Boston is going to be pissed off. Oh, well, join the club.
Council, it's been over five minutes.
Is there a motion to float?
There's a motion to a roll call by Judy Garcia.
Okay.
Until such time, we get a resolution coming from the president?
I object.
Leo Robinson, lay it on the table.
Do you have an objection from, there's no objection to it right now?
You can roll call it. We can roll call.
Do you want to roll call the delay on the table?
No, I don't think that's what we made the statement. She's on, so.
To make a statement a roll call, Leo, Council Robinson requested to lay it on the table. No, she has an option. She just objected. She has an option for a roll call, to lay it on the table.
I object to lay it on the table.
She can do that.
Do you want to have a roll call on the objection?
Do you want to have a roll call on the objection?
And if the clerk can clarify the vote for the council?
Okay. Counselor Garcia, you need a roll call to object.
To object, right. A yes vote would be to adopt, a no vote would be to deny to lay it on the table.
So just to clarify, if we vote yes, it gets laid on the table, if we vote no, it comes back on the floor. So a yes vote supports Counselor Gar, I'm sorry, Counselor Robinson's lay on the table until another resolution is drafted. A no vote continues the debate and we would then vote on the resolution.
Okay. Counselor Vido absent, Counselor Abisenada?
Yes.
Yes, to lay it on the table. Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Garcia?
No.
No. Counselor Vega Maldonado absent. Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
No.
No. Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
What is it? Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
No.
No. Counselor Brown?
No.
No. Counselor Zabit?
No.
No. One, two, three, four, to lay it on the table, one, two, three, four, five, not to lay it on the table and two absent. The motion is properly before you.
Excuse me, wait a minute. What did we, we voted? But the yes meant what? To adopt it or?
No, a yes went to lay on the table, we were suspended.
No, 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 I want to vote, I adopted, I changed my vote. I didn't understand it.
It didn't survive anyway, so we're going to vote on it now.
All right, I want, I wanted to vote no.
It still would have interfered.
Yeah.
Uh, Counselor Garcia is requesting a roll call.
So now we have a, we have the resolution in front of us and a vote, a yes to adopt the resolution and a no vote to not support the resolution.
Counselor Vido absent, Counselor Abisenada?
No.
No. Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Wait a minute, okay. Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado absent. Counselor Robinson?
No.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
No.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor Zabit?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six in favor, three opposed, two absent. The motion is adopted.
We now have an order introduced by Counselor Brown regarding city manager to instruct inspectional service department to have property owners between 100 Broadway and Chelsea Court clean the property. Seeing no objection, that move is adopted under suspension. We have an order introduced by Counselor Brown regarding that the traffic and parking commission place on their agendas to look into putting a slowdown or kids playing signs at 256 Spruce Street leading into Heard Street.
Stopped under suspension, I'd like to speak briefly on it, Mr. President.
Seeing no objection, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is right at the corner of Heard Street and Spruce, directly across from the number of the street that's mentioned here in the order with the playground. Since we started, since this playground has been placed there a few years back, this area has changed right now, it's going into two lanes, a lot of cars are at, actually, it's going into two lanes, but it's one, two, it's three different directions that you can go at either one moment, right at the park. And because there's a lot of kids now starting to come out, the residents in that area have been complaining. It's right up at the front of 150 and 100 Heard Street where there's a lot of traffic and cars coming in from Spruce Street, taking the left to go down towards Heard Street, cars coming from Blossom, coming across Heard Street, going down to Spruce Street, going straight and turning to Heard, and it's a disaster area there. I'd like the manager to have just moved to the traffic apartment for their next meeting and see if they can actually put a sign, slowdown children, or just try to curb the, curb the location where they turn on and make the sign more visible so we can stop a potential accident there. Thank you.
Next order introduced by Counselor Brown, order traffic and parking commission place on their agendas to look into putting a no parking sign at the corner of Everdav and Arlington Street. Was that the one we just did?
Stopped under suspension, I'd like to speak briefly. Again, this is right here at the corner of Arlington and Heard Street, not Arlington and Everdav. One side you have Dunkin' Donuts, the other side you have a car dealership. You also now have the 112 and the buses coming up from Abbotus Hill. Once they come down Abbotus Hill, they turn on Spruce Street, they have to turn on Arlington Street, and there's been mornings where the buses had to back up because that car parked on the corner. Once you turn there, you can't get past because both cars are parked. On one side of the street, on the right-hand side where the, um, the sales operation for the automobiles are, there's no parking on the corner. But it parked, the cars parked close to the corner from Everdav and Arlington, you just don't give enough room for the bus to make that turn. That bus goes down Arlington Street, it turns up six, I mean, it turns up six feet and it comes back through Broadway, goes over to Airport, East Boston area. So I hope they can look into that. Thank you.
Next order introduced by Counselor Robinson, order that the city manager reach out to Demoulin Supermarket Inc., real estate division, to discuss the future plans of their property.
Counselor Robinson?
I'd, I'd, I'd actually like to make an amendment that the, we have Demoulas come before the city council. And I'll be, I just, I'll, I'll be brief, actually, you know.
Sorry, what was the amendment again?
I want amended for Demoulas to come before the city council.
You want a conference?
I want a conference, yes, with Demoulas before the city council. And the reason I, that I'm at, I'm requesting this is that in 1981, Demoulas was a, they were a tenant at the Mystic Mall. And then in 1998, they actually purchased the property. And, just bear with me. And at that, at, at that time, we, we made some changes to the zoning ordinances and a vision for the area that Chelsea has been reconsidering the types of uses that can be undertaken at the property. And Chelsea prefers that a mixed use, which would include residential component rather than a use that is wholly or partially retail or retail and commercial, be constructed on a property which would be the only uses allowed under that zoning ordinance. And back in, in 2005, Chelsea submitted to the city council, proposed zoning changes that would extend the existing to the property, which will require mixed use projects comprised of a combination of two or more of the following uses, residential, office, retail, restaurant, hotel, and open space. And I think it's time that they come before this board and, and give us an update on what their plans are for the property. And since 2005 until today, for me, it's unacceptable. We need to know what their plan is and how they want to proceed with their property. So I would request that we have them come before the council so we can ask certain questions to Demoulas, what, what their future plans are for the property. Thank you, Mr. President.
Next order?
The next order introduced by Counsel Recupero and Counsel Lopez, order that the city manager converse with the business community in Chelsea to discuss if they could adopt a policy to incorporate paper job application, applications in addition to online applications.
I'd like to adopt under suspension of the objection, I'd like to speak on it.
Seeing no objection.
This is just asking the city manager if he can talk to the businesses, if they will do it as a courtesy. They're not required to do it, but a lot of people don't have iPhones and don't have computers. So it would be a nice thing for people to get it on paper. By law, we can't ask these businesses to do it because it's, we can't ask them, but we can ask them if they will consider as a courtesy to the community if they will do
Counsel Lopez?
Yes, um, this is just trying to help people who are, that are not really savvy in using the internet or their phones when they're looking for jobs. I know that there's many places like Walgreens, CBS, and some other big places. If you go and apply for a job, they say, oh yeah, go on the internet and apply online. There's a lot of people in our community that cannot do that. So we're just trying to help our people in our community. Thank you.
Next order?
Next order introduced by Counsel Recupero, order that the city manager incorporate the message of requiring a license to operate a, a moped on the electronic billboard.
I'd like to adopt under suspension, there's no objection, I'd like to speak about it.
Seeing no objection.
It's come to my attention, it would have never came to my attention, and I know that the majority of the people in the city of Chelsea don't know, I didn't know, that you need a license or a learner's permit and a plate to operate those little mopeds. So I would like everybody to know that that is an offense if they catch you with it because 99% of the population does not know that you need a license to operate those little things. Even they think because it's 50 cc's, they don't have to have it, but you do have to have it. This, and so I would like the city to make sure that everybody knows. To toda la gente de la ciudad de Chelsea. Ahora está una lejía que tú no puedes manejar esos motores pequeñas. Te necesita una licencia para hacerlo. So yo quiero que el manager de la ciudad pone un algo que dice a la gente que no puede manejar así, porque es importante si tú lo manejas sin licencia, permiso, o un plate, te puede dar un fine o te puede quitar tu motor.
Just FYI.
You want me to ask this?
No, just FYI. We do have a translator, so you don't need to say it in Spanish.
Okay.
Would you like me to interpret that in Spanish?
Who is the translator?
It was great.
Oh, you have the translator?
I do.
And we also have someone online who's translating in a Zoom, in a Zoom, so just to let you know. So that's what I was referring to, the Zoom has a Spanish channel now. Right, that's what I said, so he doesn't have to, you don't have to do Spanish.
Okay. I didn't know, I didn't know. I hear another translator, I didn't know she wants a translator.
Yeah, yeah. Counselor, I'm sorry, we have a subcommittee on conference to be held to discuss new guidelines for decorum among city councilors during public speaking portion and communications sent to the council. Introduced by Counsel Judith Garcia. Judith Garcia, what's the motion?
I make a motion to adopt unanimously under suspension, I wish to briefly speak on it.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so I know, I am fully aware that we have a subcommittee on rules, but given that this meeting is specifically to discuss an overview of rules and an overview of public speaking and matters that affect every city councillor, I am making a request to make this a subcommittee on conference for everyone to attend as not an optional manner, but more of courtesy for, for everyone. So that's why I made that a subcommittee on conference, so I want to make that clear. And the rest, I think, is pretty self-explanatory. I think it's, it's great specifically for the new members and for everyone just to revisit the rules that this body abides by, but also revisit them and, and just figure out new agreements that we can have as a new body going forward. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
I'd like to amend and send it to the Rules and Ordinances Committee, and the reason being is that we do have a Rules and Ordinances Committee, in the beginning of every year, we always say that we adopt the previous rules and regulations to this council until such time that there, there is a change. I think it's a, you know, in those, anybody can go to the meeting when it goes before the Rules Committee, and I think the appropriate place for it to be should start in the Rules Committee.
I have to.
So we'll have a roll call on the amendment to, the original, was it to be sent?
To conference.
To conference for a council-wide, all council versus Counsel Robinson makes an amendment that it should just be sent to the Subcommittee on Rules and?
Ordinances.
Ordinances. A, if a yes vote passes, we adopt Counsel Robinson's amendment that would send this to the committee on, the Subcommittee on Rules and Ordinances. Great question. Hold on one second.
Any wolf is the chairman. Giovanni's on it?
I think so.
The members of the ordinance, of the Committee on Rules and Ordinances is Counselor Lopez, Counselor Demol Vido, and Counselor Rodriguez. And myself as the chair.
No.
So any of, any of as a chair. So again, now, even though those are the three members of the committee, anyone is welcome to, any councillor can go to the meeting and speak, much like any of our other council, our council meetings. However, if anyone, if they objected this and want this to be the whole committee, conference on committee with all city councillors, you can object to Counsel Robinson's amendment, and then we'll go back to the original motion. Counsel Brown?
Whether it's on the Subcommittee of Conference or Rules Committee, I think it's important that we all attend these meetings. We have already had some discussion. Hopefully, we haven't forgotten why it's important for us to be having this meeting. I think this is something that will benefit the whole council. As a matter of fact, I know it will benefit the whole council. As we stated, some of these rules have been so outdated, we have new membership, new members that's not even aware of some of the commitments. As of right now, as of right now, you know, for evidence, you call the Rules Committee and folks don't even know who's on it, three members out of 11, and folks don't even know, that's embarrassing. So, and I'm not here to embarrass anyone, but I think these meetings, this discussion that we've already had leading up to this resolution or this, this order, is that we can better ourselves and we can actually also iron out some things and update some things that we felt at the time of the meeting that we had a few weeks ago, not even three weeks ago, that, which is important to this body. So whether it's the rules or Subcommittee, I think it's a mandatory. If you just can't be there, you can't be there. But I think for all of us, we need to get rid of some of the problems that we're having in public and some of the things that we're saying to one another regarding our elected position status. I think we need to really get together and, and I think it will be very fruitful if we can just all agree on this motion, this order tonight, that this here should go to Subcommittee instead of just having an option to show up at a three-membership meeting. Thank you.
The clerk call a roll. If the yes vote, it will be sent to the Subcommittee on Rules and Ordinances, and no vote will defeat the amendment.
Counsel Vido absent, Counsel Abisenada?
No.
Counsel Recupero?
Yes.
What did he say?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
No.
Counsel Vega Maldonado absent. Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
No.
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 Counselor Taylor?
No.
Counsel Lopez?
No.
Counselor Brown?
No.
And Counsel Zabit? And Councilor Zabit?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Two in favor. One, two, three, four.
Motion is defeated.
Motion defeated.
We will now move to the original question, which is an adoption of the order.
Under suspension.
Under suspension. So it goes to under suspension. We'll now have a meet, that's, that topic will now go to conference. We'll now move on to the next, next order.
Next order introduced by Councilor Zaneda. Order that city manager to consider a charter change to create a new citywide tenant council board to be established to hear local resident concerns regarding tenant issues.
I would add, add an amendment that this be sent to the Charter Commission. I think that's where it probably should be.
Counselor Brown?
It's a heat at night tonight. I just want, for everyone's information, know that the Department of Community Development, they actually have a, a elected member of the tenant council. So I just want you to be aware of that. When Deval Patrick was the governor of the Commonwealth, he actually put into law that if you have a housing authority, one housing authority member would be an elected member from the state. Unfortunately, since he's been there and since that law was passed, they have not given us really the language of how to move forward with it. So we get these calls a lot at the office I work at. So we, we may want to have the legal department look into that because there is still a slot, one slot for a community, a, a tenant association member from the housing authority. So if that's any way related to this, I just want to make us aware of it. Thank you.
Counselor Cooper?
I'd like to apologize to the people outside. I'm, I went deaf in one ear. And I've been asking the city to give me an earset. And they still say it costs too much money. So I can't hear a lot of this stuff. I want an earset. I, I'm legally deaf on one side, and I can prove it. The Disabled Act requires that I have one. So I should have one where, so I can hear. God, two years ago, took my hearing away out of one side. So now I'm and I, I can't understand a lot of times what goes on, especially with the masks. So I want the city to produce and give me an earset so I can hear what everybody's saying. Thank you.
This is going to the Charter Commission under suspension?
He made an amendment. It was not voted on. And I, like, if anyone has any objection, I'd like to speak from the chair. Because that amendment has to be voted on. So we haven't, we hadn't voted on the amendment. This goes to the Charter. And if I may speak, any objection? Thank you. I'm not going to be voting to this be sent to the Charter because I think that boards and commissions can be part of the administrative code and not necessarily part of the Charter itself. So I, there's no need to change the Charter, first and foremost. Second, I think that, you know, not to trip up the current Charter Committee, but I think they're already done their work and are ready to prepare their final statements or final recommendations rather. And the time for suggestions to change the Charter through the Charter Committee has come to an end. So I wouldn't want to, you know, step up their, you know, muddle their process. So I'll be voting on the amendment and, and then allow that. I'll speak on the actual matter after that. But first, we'll take a roll call on the amendment that this gets sent to the Charter Committee.
For correction in regards to the Charter. When the Charter comes up, this city council can make changes to what has already been
Correct.
proposed at the Charter. So there is an option for people to still have input when the conference takes place. Or could be several conferences that take place.
The Council Robinson has withdrawn his amendment, so now we are back to the original question. If there are no objections, I'd like to speak on the original proposal. A motion, well, do we have a motion to adopt?
Adopted under suspension.
Adopted under suspension. Right now, the Chelsea Housing Authority has a tenant council. There are members within its large enough of an entity, large enough number of apartments, that it actually has a tenant council. But what we don't have is a tenant council for many of the other units across the city. In a city that has nearly eighty percent of its housing as apartments, I think that our tenants here in the city, our residents who are tenants in these apartments, they don't have an avenue. They don't have a way to have anyone advocate for them, nor a system when there are any sort of problems and complications that rise. There has been thought that maybe larger buildings, such as the Glenn Building, can create its own tenant council, and that's fine. It has so many apartments in that one complex that to find people who want to participate in a council, that's easy. But that's not as easy to create a tenant council when you're living in a three-family. When you're living in a six-family, it's just not as easy to create a tenant council. So my hope is that the city manager can come up with a staff, a commission, much like we have on human rights, much like we have on, for the youth, on a tenant advocacy group that could handle and be a guide to our tenants. So I just wanted to send this to him, allow his staff in community development to come back and suggest something, and then maybe we can have some appointments made to this advocacy group. Seeing no objection, that motion passes. We'll now move on to the next.
Next order introduced by Councilor Zaneda. Order that the city manager and his economic development director to meet with the city council, provide an update on non-residential tax-based growth and job creation in the city of Chelsea.
Counselor Brown asked that this order be adopted under suspension. Seeing no objection?
The next order introduced by Councilor Zaneda. Order that the city management present the city council with an order to supplement collaborative summer youth initiative twenty twenty-one allocation with an additional one hundred thousand dollars from free cash.
Counselor Brown?
Adopt this? Well, you can't adopt it. You have to move it to a second reading?
No, no, it's, it's a request to the city manager. It's not an order. So I just, it's a communication sent to him.
So.
Suspension?
Adopt this under suspension then?
Yes.
Yes.
That's good enough, yeah.
Yep.
Next order introduced by Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Taylor. Move that this be sent to a second reading.
Right. Reading, okay. Next order introduced by Councilor Zaneda. Order that city council hereby accept and approve the grant from Med Project LLC in amount of one thousand three hundred dollars to allow for the collection of disposal of unwanted household medications.
Counselor Taylor asks that we get, send this, approve this on a roll call vote.
Roll call.
We do.
Yeah, you've got enough. Roll call. Counselor Vido absent. Counselor Zaneda?
Yes.
Councilor Cooper absent. Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado absent. Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor Zabit?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favor, not opposed, three absent. The next order introduced by Councilor Zaneda. Order that the city council hereby accepts the, and approves the gift from Ms. Ann B. Murphy in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars for support of the Chelsea Eats Food debit card program.
Motion to adopt this on a roll call vote? Anyone like to speak on it? Counselor Brown?
Just want to thank the, we got the order and a copy of the check earlier. Really want to just go on record just to say thank you to this lady from Cambridge who sent this over. It goes to show that not only we're doing good work here, but people appreciate what we're doing here. And they also see the need of those that are in need, especially around this time with the pandemic. This is fifteen hundred dollars that again will support our eat debit card program. So again, when you see folks from outside the city coming in to help, it really encourage us. And I just wanted to say thank you. Not sure if she or her family's online or any family members here, but if so, please, thank you, thank you for this one hundred, fifteen hundred dollars donation.
If I may speak quickly, Ms. Murphy actually contacted me randomly several weeks ago. Heard the program, heard about the program on the radio and was impressed and asked that she wanted to make a contribution. I said, well, I guess the best thing you can do, I appreciate your enthusiasm. I would suggest that you write a check and send it to five hundred Broadway and attention to Tom Ambrosino. And sure enough, I guess the check did come in. So I want to, I want to thank again, Ms. Murphy. It's great to hear from wonderful people like that who want to help their fellow human being. And it was just simply a radio program that this woman heard about what we were doing here in Chelsea. And again, a lot of credit goes to our city manager who, you know, created this program, obviously with the assistance and the, of the, our, the, with the city council. But again, he spearheaded this and got the publicity. And so thanks again to the city manager and to Ms. Murphy at home in Cambridge. Roll call.
Council Vido absent. Council Zaneda?
Yes.
Council Cooper?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado absent. Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor Zabit?
Yes.
Nine in favor and not opposed, two absent. Motion is adopted. We have before us introduced by Councilor Zaneda the TIF recommendation for the Innis apartment projects.
In order approving the amendment, urban center tax increment.
Along with the other business relating to the Central Avenue project, if there are no objections?
Seeing none.
And we have now before us the capital improvement program loan order.
Actually, the, I would ask to move that to a second reading, if there are no objections?
Seeing none. At this time, I'll ask if the, any of my colleagues have a special announcement at all? Counsel Lopez?
I just want to announce that Counsel Vida is still recovering from COVID. And she hasn't been here for a while. And we wish her to recover soon. And that was the reason why she hasn't been here at the meetings and, and some especially.
Counsel Brown?
Mr. President, I, to residents and everyone, I just want us to applaud ourselves for the work that we're doing here to try to beat this COVID nineteen. But I also want to remind us that we're not out of the woods yet. We still have to stay diligently to attack this. We still have shot, Mr. Manager, we still have vaccine shots available. We still have them available. Please get in contact with the city hall here. It's, it's light. It's coming through the tunnel. But we still have to still do what we have to do. We still have to be very cautious. I know there's a lot of conversation about unmasking and walk around if you already had your two doses of shot or if you had your one dose of Johnson and Johnson. Let us still remember, when this first came upon us, Chelsea was the largest, hardest hit with the largest people with that COVID nineteen. So to say that, we are a condensed, small community with a lot of bodies. So we still have to continue to cover up. We still have to be aware of our surroundings. And hopefully, we'll be able to get through this by the end of the summer or the, you know, August and September. So please be aware, it's still out there. Thank you.
Counselor Cooper?
Pretty soon, the park will be opening near, on Marginal Street. And I think this year is going to open up all the way instead of halfway. I'm not sure. The next meeting, I will let you know exactly if they're going to open at halfway or all the way. Thank you.
Any memorials? Moment of silence. Counselor Robinson?
Yeah, actually, former teammate, a long-time Chelsea resident, Phil Harvey, passed away about a week ago.
Counsel Lopez?
I just want to remember the death of my sister, Margarita Lopez Valiente, who died four years ago, actually today. And also my granddaughter, who died twenty days after, her name is, was Ivy Lopez Rojas, three years, that anniversary. I would like to have a moment of silence for them.
Thank you, everyone. That concludes our meeting.